Alrighty, here we go. This one, oh, this one's kind of interesting. This one is a benefits and physiological effects of techniques that manipulate soft tissue question. How does massage benefit the urinary system? A provides a calming effect, B it stimulates the release of endorphins, C it aids with the elimination of surplus fluids and toxins from the body, or D it increases body awareness?
Um, it aids with elimination.
It does, it does. Um, the urinary system regulates blood pressure and electrolyte balance um by eliminating excess water and toxins. So if you're moving those things around by proxy because you're moving all these fluids within the body, especially, you know, the cardiovascular system, you are helping with moving that. Um, you do also release endorphins, but that benefits what system?
The in, in, what is it?
It would be endocrine system that would release it if we were talking about a hormone, but in this case, when a hormone is coming from the blank system, we call it a neurotransmitter, and an endorphin is a neurotransmitter. So we are benefiting not the endocrine system, but the
auto?
Neurotransmitter, neuro nerve, the
Oh, nervous system.
The nervous system, and endorphins cause a calming effect and they increase the body's awareness. Massage will increase the body's awareness of itself through touch, because of course we have touch receptors. And where do we have touch receptors? Where are they located in the body?
Um, our touch receptors, like on our, on our hands?
We feel them for sure in our hands. They are located in our skin.
Oh, yeah.
Is where, yep, is where the touch receptors are. Alright, it's another benefits and physiological effects question. Of the following options, which is not a mechanical force that can be produced by massage techniques? A, field force, B sheer loading, C portion, or D bending stress?
Can you read it one more time?
Sure. Of the following options, which is not a mechanical force that can be produced by massage techniques? A, field force, B sheer loading, C portion, or D bending stress?
A?
A is correct. So a field force would be something like magnetism or gravity, alright? That would not be, that would not be a force that a massage therapist could produce. You will, you will not outdo the gravitational field of the earth as you are massaging someone. Alright. Anatomy and physiology. A client is having pain along the tip of his shoulder, and it continues along the posterior aspect of the upper arm to the dorsum of the lower arm and hand into the pointer and middle fingers. What dermatome is involved? A, C5, B, C6, C, C7, or D, C8? I feel vindicated every time someone complained about a dermatome or myatome assignment in my class now.
Um, is it C7?
It is C7. Um, absolutely, that is correct. C5 would um go along the anterior aspect of the lower arm, and C5 does not travel into the hand at all. C6, depending on what maps you look at, travel into the thumb, and then C8 goes into the ring and pinky fingers. So C7 is the one that primarily goes into the index and middle fingers. But these questions here, and the questions on range of motion, don't beat yourself up on too badly about not really knowing, because depending on, on what neurologist or um what physical therapist did the study, you have different degrees of movement stated for each joint in the range of motion joint charts. And for these dermatomes, myatomes are a little bit mapped better, but for dermatomes, sometimes the maps are a little bit different um for where they think the nerve conduction actually goes. And this, the emplex takes information from 22 different states to create the test. So sometimes things like that, or the exact temperature that the water or your stones need to be in the hot stones. Um, sometimes those are slightly different depending on what literature um the FSMTB pulled that information from. So I'm just throwing that out there. When it gets to really exact stuff like that, don't, don't kill yourself trying to know it. Um, focus on the, the bigger stuff, which you're already doing great on.
Nice.
Alright, guidelines for professional practice. How soon after a treatment should the therapist document the details of the session? A, as soon as possible, B, by the next day, C
As soon as possible.
Okay, yes, as soon as possible. Um, you might have guidelines at work that they're due at the end of the day, or like D here is within 72 hours, but you don't want to forget details. You don't want to forget details, and also remember, if you're keeping soap notes for yourself, don't just keep clinical notes in there. Notate things like what their favorite smell was, their favorite song, um, things like that. Maybe if they like flannel sheets more than like, um, like the cotton sheets or something, depending on what you have in your office. Things like that will make them think that you are a psychic and the most phenomenal therapist that knows them inside and out. If you look over those notes because, before they come in and you pull out the lavender lotion or something, instead of something else that you have because they like it. So just keep that in mind too for your notes. Alright. All of the following are part of the integumentary system except for A, the hair, B, the nails.
That's part of it.
I'm sorry, what?
Um.
Yep, that's part of it. Yep. C, the skin.
That's part of it.
I would hope so. D, the lymph nodes.
That's not part of it.
Correct. They're in the lymphatic system. Alright, this next one is a guidelines for professional practice. Alright, what is one benefit of accepting a job position as a salaried employee instead of working there as a subcontractor?
Steady income.
Steady income, absolutely. Steady income and those slumps. That also means sometimes you're, you're, you're pulling more than, than what you thought you were going to too. Watch out for that. Alright, kinesiology. What is isotonic action? A, a muscle contraction during which tension develops while the muscle shortens? B, a muscle contraction during which tension develops while the muscle lengthens? C, a muscle contraction during which tension develops and the muscle either shortens or lengthens? Or D, a muscle contraction during which tension develops while the muscle does not change length?
It either shortens or lengthens. C?
Correct. C is the correct answer. Absolutely. What would it be if it was D, a muscle contraction during which tension develops while the muscle does not change length?
Does not move. It's E, esoteric, or the one that starts with the E? Eccentric?
You're thinking of eccentric, and that occurs when a muscle lengthens against resistance. Isometric is when it contracts, but it doesn't change shape. Like if you pressed your arms against a door frame and then you just squeezed as hard as you could, your arm can't go any further out. It's not actually lengthening, but you are contracting. So that's an isometric action. Alright. Benefits and physiological effects. Fill in the blank. When trying to promote Venus return, the massage therapist should apply strokes to the extremities moving
Towards the heart.
Towards the heart. We don't even have to go any further. When you know it deep in your heart like that, and you want to jump at it and say yes towards the heart, just double make sure that you didn't skip over like the word not or something in the question. Because that's like one of, personally speaking, one of my biggest problems, but I've seen this with students a lot of times too. You get excited, you know the answer, and you want to answer it, but make sure you read that whole question correctly, because otherwise it's a totally opposite answer. That's another reason to take it slow. Alright, A and P. During inspiration, in which direction does the diaphragm move? A, up, B, forward, C, down, or D, it does not move?
Down.
Down, correct. It needs to create a room in that cavity in your thorax there to, for the lungs to be able to expand. Yeah, and we are heavy on these benefits and physiological effects. That's what the next one is too. When applying a technique with compressive force to the area near the popliteal space, what is important to consider? A, slight compressive force for a long period may cause damage to the nerves in this area. B, intense brief pressure for a short period can cause damage to the nerves in this area. D, slight compressive force for a short period may cause damage to the nerves in the area. Or D, there are no nerves in this area.
Um, that's your knee. So there is
Yep, that's the back here knee. Yep.
Um, so I feel like slight compressed force for a long period of time may cause damage to the nerve in this area.
Yep, and depending on the person, intense brief pressure is possibly a no-no as well. But you are correct. Um, for this, for the nerves, um, A is correct. Slight compressive force for a long period may cause damage to the nerves in that area. Alright. Guidelines for professional practice. Which of the following is not appropriate behavior for an employee? A, having a positive attitude? B, discussing personal conflicts with clients in order to build rapport? C, being loyal and patient, or D, accepting the authority of a supervisor?
Discussing personal conflicts.
With clients, yep. And that's harder than you think sometimes when clients are constantly asking you personal questions. Um, you have to be really, really aware of your personal and professional boundaries. And to stay on top of it, especially if you're, if you're someone that likes to share things or doesn't mind oversharing, it can be a very slippery slope with one of, some of your talkative uh clients. Alright, ethics question. To communicate most effectively with another person, all of the following must be taken into account except for A, tone of voice, B, body language, C, financial background, or D, words used?
Uh, financial background.
Correct. Alright, during the first few minutes of a massage, the massage therapist notices the client appears to be sexually aroused. The client immediately notices and sincerely apologizes and appears very embarrassed. He states he has never had a massage before and does not know why this is happening. How should the massage therapist respond? A, leave the room immediately with no explanation to the client and seek help from a supervisor? B, completely ignore the situation and continue with the massage? C, ask the client to leave because of inappropriate behavior? Or D, educate the client regarding the physiologic process occurring to cause this, but ensure he understands that this is a non-sexual relationship?
Educate the client?
Yes, and I really The question sort of sets it up.
Yeah, you can also, you can also like can you just ignore the and continue?
Well, he's already talking about it though.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know what I mean? He's a, he's embarrassed, he's apologizing. He says he's never had a massage before. He's clearly in some kind of panic building. So personally, I don't like the question because he may be getting an erection, which is what the question should state. If he's getting sexually aroused, then it's probably an erection coupled with some type of inappropriate behavior that would indicate that he's sexually interested. Because just getting an erection, you could absolutely educate them on the physiologic process that has, he may not be sexually interested at all in any way, shape, or form, and could still absolutely get an erection. Um, so that's, that's the thing that's kind of confusing to me. Is he actually sexually aroused, or is it just an erection? Um, so if he's apologizing and clearly confused, this man does not know what's happening, yes, please educate him. Um, let him know it's normal, but absolutely make it clear, like this is a, a non-sexual relationship for sure. And I would, I would argue again, as your business and ethics teacher, to absolutely have a sexual policy clause in your initial intake paperwork that you have for your clientele. Alright, fill in the blank. Blank are white anaerobic muscle fibers that fatigue comparatively quickly. A, fast twitch fibers, B, slow twitch fibers, C, intermediate twitch fibers, or D, motor units?
White. Slope twitch fibers are red. Fast twitch fibers are white. Okay, A.
Yep, and honestly, the word is there too. They fatigue quickly. You have fast twitch fibers because they have to be on call for fast, rapid, powerful movement. And if you do anything explosively, like if you run as fast as you possibly can, you are going to tire out at a much quicker rate than if you were slowly walking to the same place. Right? Because you're using less energy to do it slowly. Um, so the faster something is occurring, the faster it's going to fatigue. It doesn't matter if it's you or a tiny part of you, um, like your muscle fibers, because everything requires energy to function. Um, so it's going to burn out. When you see that it fatigues quickly, it's fast twitch. If you see that it's going to fatigue slowly, yes, but you are also correct. Slow twitch fibers are red because they're aerobic. They need that oxygen um that's being carried in there. So they are, they're getting fed, and they are getting, um, they are getting and using the oxygen there. So just keep that in mind as well. Alrighty. Pathology. Finally, I was feeling lonely. I like pathology. Alright, what is tendonitis? A, inflammation of a bursa, B, inflammation of a tendon sheath, C, inflammation of a joint, or D, inflammation of a tendon?
Tendonitis, inflammation of a tendon.
Yep, of a tendon. If it were a tendon sheath, it would be tenosynovitis.
Tenos, how, how do you pronounce it?
Tenno, synovitis. Uh, well. Right there, or I'll make it bigger for you. What would it be if it was inflammation of a bursa?
Bursa tendonitis.
Versitis. So itis is your inflammation.
Yes.
So everything's going to end in the itis here. Tenno is uh referring to that tendon, synov is referring to the synovial sheath that's there, the inner and outer layers, well, inner in this case, of an inflammation of a joint. What's that one?
Arthritis?
Arthritis. Arthro is joints, right?
Yeah.
Arthro is joints. We lose the O because we have an I for itis. So it's arthritis, inflammation of the joints. This is where studying those lists of prefixes and suffixes, yep, that terminology, that's really going to help you because you can break down all of the words that you see and understand the question, even if you don't remember what the body part or the pathology is. Alright. Client assessment. There are a number of ways to classify various types of blood pressure. What is diastolic pressure? Diastolic pressure, A, pressure of blood within the atrium, B, pressure of blood against the walls of the arteries when the ventricles contract, C, pressure of blood within the ventricle, or D, pressure of blood against the walls of the arteries when the ventricles relax? So remember what you said about process of elimination before?
Yes, um, we can get rid of pressure of the blood against the walls. Wait, wait. Wait, oh, wait. Okay, we can get rid of A and C.
Yep, because B and D are very similar, so. So you have diastolic and systolic, alright? Think of systolic is for squeeze contraction, and D is for downtime, which is relaxation.
Relaxation.
Diastolic pressure is pressure of blood against the walls of arteries when the ventricles relax. Systolic is when they squeeze or contract. So the correct answer is indeed D. Alright, here's another ethics one. Do you want me to focus on a particular subject or just keep going all over?
Um, so can we do client assessment? Um. Pathology. Um, let's see. Can you take out um kinesiology and anatomy and everything else should be fine?
Sure. I'm gonna jump to this one. Alright, fill in the blank. Under the direction of a physician, a massage therapist sees the client with a diagnosis of blank. Because this client bruises so easily, it is essential that the therapist use extremely light pressure. A, sciatica, B, pneumonia, C, hemophilia, or D, anemia?
Um, it's, it's not D, and it's not B. Bruises easily. Uh, let's go with C.
C is correct, hemophilia. Sciatica is that impingement of the sciatic nerve.
Nerve.
Alright, a massage therapist is applying a technique to a client prone on the massage table. At what angle should the therapist's shoulders be in relation to contact point on the client's body? A, zero degrees, B, 45 degrees, C, 180 degrees, or D, 90 degrees?
It's not not zero degrees.
Nope, the therapist would be lying on top of the client. Shoulder to shoulder.
Forty-five, I think, would make them like a little bit like uncomfortable, right? Like it's a weird angle.
Be a weird angle, but you would have less pressure being applied. It would be uh minimal pressure. Would make you work harder for the same amount of pressure to be done.
Ninety degrees.
Ninety degrees is correct.
It sounds like you wouldn't really have to strain
Correct, correct. You would be upright then, and then applying downward forward force with stacked joints. If you were 180 degrees, you'd be lying across the stu, or across the um client with your shoulders somewhere by their ankles, and that would be ineffective as well. So zero and 180 would be parallel to it and not helpful in any way, shape, or form. Alright, oh, we wanted to skip kinesiology. Alright, here's an easier one for pathology. You guys should have these hopefully down in your brain by now. What is scoliosis? Is it A, thoracic curvature of the spine, B, lumbar curvature of the spine, C, lateral curvature of the spine, or D, no curvature of the spine?
Uh, it's not, it's not D. It has to have a curvature. Um, it's going to be lateral.
It is lateral curvature. It is lateral curvature.
Like an S.
Correct. If you have an excessive lumbar curvature, what is that called?
Excessive? Hyper, uh, it starts with a K.
Uh, nope, not for lumbar. It does for thoracic.
Oh, oh, hyper low- lower doses.
Lower doses, yep. Yep, well, it sounds like lower. After twins, so did I. Um, thoracic hyper kyphosis is the excessive thoracic curvature. Mm-hmm, yep, Dowager's hump, yep.
Hey, someone joined us, by the way.
I see this. Hello, mystery person labeled only a student. Would you like to introduce yourself?
I, I don't know how to turn my computer on though, my video.
You don't have to if you don't want to, so. You are, these are optional M-plex Zoom sessions that I do um for studying. So are you, are you one of my one oh five students?
Yeah, anatomy?
Yes, yeah, introduction. You're a brand new one. You're a newbie, yes. So you're welcome to join uh me and the lovely Ms. Leslie if you want. Um, Leslie's on her way to taking her M-plex and she's gonna rock it. So we're just going over uh questions through the AMTA Pocket Prep right now, so that um you guys know sort of what's gonna be on the M-plex and what answering those looks like. Um, but this is a totally optional session. You are more than welcome to try to answer, um, join in and listen to us, but you don't have to be here.
Join in because I was trying to get familiar with it. With the Zoom and how it works.
Awesome, so this module, um, I will be doing this every Wednesday from twelve to two until Leslie gets tired of me. And then I, and then um on Thursdays, that same link that you came in uh for this. Uh, Thursdays from twelve to one, I'll be hanging out in this Zoom room. Just in case anybody wants to join me and you have a question about class or something, so. It's, it, you are more than welcome to stay. My one oh five students that have joined in in the past and got an idea of what's on the M-plex end up doing better. Let me just put it that way, because you guys know what to expect then. And then you don't get upset when you see Mrs. Alice's work in the pathology class.
Hey, well, I'm gonna stay for a little bit and just listen to you guys.
Okay, awesome. If you don't mind, just throw yourself on mute then. Um, but if you wanna unmute and interject at any time, feel free.
Thank you.
Yep. Alrighty, here we go. A client comes to a massage therapy clinic with reports of neck pain and migraines. After the first session, the client asks the therapist if she could diagnose the cause of these symptoms. Sure, I'd love to give away my license. How should the therapist respond? A, offer a diagnosis based on the assessment of soft tissue. B, have the client speak to their physician, physical therapist or chiropractor for diagnosis. C, tell that these are tension headaches, not migraines. Or D, offer a diagnosis based on past experiences with neck pain.
Well, we can't even diagnose. So have the client speak to someone else, B.
This is a classic, not my job um thing, absolutely. And you definitely can't even do C because that's still a diagnosis. You can't tell them that they're tension headaches, not migraines. You have no internal gauge to be able to tell what that client's um pain scale is. No, no. When in doubt, refer them out. Alright. Guidelines for professional practice. This one's a big one. A massage therapist has recently graduated from school, just like Ms. Leslie. Where he learned about the basic principles of Western medicine. He is especially interested in working with clients who have spinal injuries and herniated discs. He secures employment in a chiropractor's office. A client comes to him and says she has experienced great results in the use of essential oils with other massage therapists and would like him to use aromatherapy techniques during today's massage. What is the best course of action for this therapist to take? A, do not treat the client with aromatherapy in the first session. In his own time, he should do some research into aromatherapy and begin using these techniques when he feels ready. B politely explain to the client that he is not trained in the use of essential oils and refuse to treat her using this technique. C politely explain to the client that aromatherapy is not an appropriate treatment application. If she wants to utilize essential oils on her own, she should proceed with caution. Or D, use essential oils during the session.
He is not fully trained. So politely explain to the client.
Correct. There's a whole lot involved with essential oils that um you guys need to be made um aware of. I know that um I talk about it way too much in the pathology class. I think I bring it up like four times. But a lot of the really top creams, uh, big companies like Biotone, right? Like Biotone's everywhere. And they make some really fantastic creams to use. I'm a fan of their creams, not their lotions. And they had about a decade ago, really went into this arnica kick. Arnica is a type of um flower. And it's, it's really great um sometimes with uh bruising, superficial bruising. Um, a lot of people apply it sort of saying that it promotes healing, blah, blah, blah. You're not allowed to make any of these claims, of course. But people started putting it in their commercial creams and lotions. Arnica will cause people with cardiac um sensitivities to get tachycardia, an increased heart rate. You will get heart palpitations. I am one of those. I have a client who loves arnica. And loves that I hand make um arnica flour and arnica essential oil shea butter, like whipped shea butter. I make them by hand. I can't apply it onto her without gloves because I absorb so much transdermaling. Remember transdermal's through your skin? Whatever you're putting on your clients, you're constantly putting in your own body, okay? So remember that. You're absorbing the things that you were putting on your clients and your clients are absorbing them just like any other medicine through their skin. So if someone is sensitive to something like arnica that's in your creams, um, or in my case, my homemade shea butters and stuff, that can cause a major issue for someone who's allergic to that. So you need to be aware of these things. Sometimes uh people advertise like the wonderful citrus stuff that will dry you out in a heartbeat. So if you've got someone with like psoriasis and you've got this thick, nice smelling tangerine cream, it's not gonna end well. It really isn't. So there's, there's I cannot advocate enough to absolutely get trained in essential oils before you guys start going down that route, especially with aromatherapy. When you're breathing it in, because now you're not just taking this stuff in transdermally, you're taking it into your lungs, into your respiratory system, which means it's going to get into your blood quicker and possibly cause things like pneumonia. So there you go. That's my rant. Alright, moving on. Oh, wait, you don't want kinesiology. Let me get a different one. Here we go. Alright, be quiet, Mrs. Alice. We've already heard you teach, okay? A massage therapist has spent several years working for a chiropractor who primarily treats otherwise healthy clients who have recently sustained acute injuries. Alright, it sounds like a burn and churn uh car accident place. The therapist gets a new job in a hospice where they will provide palliative care, palliative massage. Of the following options, which changes will the therapist most likely need to make to their massage techniques? A, the therapist will need to learn to work on clients who are positioned in a bed or a chair instead of on a massage table.
Yes.
B, alright, do you wanna hear the rest? No, you're done.
Oh, well, you can, you can.
The therapist will need to employ lymphatic drainage techniques in every massage. No, they won't, not in every massage. The therapist will need to learn how to provide grief counseling. No, you don't do that. You don't do that. And D, the therapist will need to learn how to operate complex medical machinery. Alright, there was nothing tricky about that question. I was hoping there'd be like another maybe answer, but no, you can't do any of that. Okay. Fill in the blank. An active eighty-seven-year-old golfer comes to the clinic for general tension reduction and relaxation. When working with this client, the massage therapist should A, use lighter pressure? B, use more pressure? C, perform friction techniques, or D, avoid range of motion technique?
Use lighter pressure.
Correct. Fill in the blank. Blank results from the irritation of the median nerve. A carpal tunnel syndrome, B Bell's palsy, C thoracic outlet syndrome, or D fibromyalgia.
Oh, medium, that's a hand. Carpal tunnel.
Carpal tunnel, indeed. Fill in the blank. A client, I think we've done this question before together. A client is on Ritalin, which is an amphetamine. She is most likely being treated for a blank. Nervous system, indeed. Absolutely. What is arteriosclerosis? A, a condition in which the arteries are too dilated? B, a synonym for arthrosclerosis? C, the buildup of connective tissue in arteries, or D, a condition in which arteries lose their elasticity?
How do you pronounce it again?
Arteriosclerosis. I'm gonna put little hyphens in here, so. You would, you would space it out like this.
Um, okay, it's not B. Uh, it's not C. And it's not A.
Correct. So arteriosclerosis is a condition in which arteries lose their elasticity. Arthrosclerosis is what?
Arthro. Uh, that's. How, how do you, how is that?
Or arthrosclerosis, let me put it in here. It is a form of arteriosclerosis. But arthrosclerosis is when you have those fat deposits from cholesterol in the, in the blood that people talk about getting a lot when they've got like plaque in their arteries. But yes, arterio- arteri- okay, now, now. Arteriosclerosis is when they lose their elasticity. Okay. Here's a business and ethics one. Alright, a massage therapist has been working with patients for ten years. He decides he would like to work mainly with athletes. He has heard active release techniques, ART can be very effective with this group and would likely bring more patients to the clinic. He takes several classes offered by the company that developed these techniques. After he meets the specific criteria set forth by that company, he becomes certified in ART. What type of credential is this? A, a professional certification? B, governmental certification? C, governmental registration, or D, state certification?
Is that professional?
Correct. He's not registering with the government or the state for this at all, so it's definitely a professional certification. The client comes to massage therapist with reports of new right hip pain and a fever that began at the same time. The therapist decides this client should be referred to a physician. What duty of a massage therapist does this illustrate? A, the refusal to treat? B, consent to treatment? D, the duty to, or C, the duty to document, or D, refusal to improve?
Refusal to treat.
Correct. You are killing these, man, all the way through. You're doing a great job. So I have no concerns. Oh, this one's an anatomy, but it's really a pathology one, so I'm gonna do it. It's been misclassified. Fill in the blank. A CVA, often called a blank, is the most common brain disorder. A, a stroke. Boom, stroke. Alright, how long do you wanna keep doing this?
Um, till two is fine.
Till two, alrighty. Which of the following best defines cryotherapy? A, heat therapy, B hydrotherapy, C ice therapy, or D massage therapy?
It's not heat therapy. It's not D. It's a form of water therapy. But I'm gonna go with ice therapy.
Yes, because it's frozen water therapy. Or really, really cold water therapy. Which would be frozen. So yes, ice therapy. I love cryotherapy, man. You can get so much more range of motion um utilizing ice when doing um passive stretching and stuff with them. I just, I, I, I will not go on that tangent. I promise you, let's just say I'm a huge fan of cryotherapy, okay? A runner has developed pain in his Achilles tendon after going on a ten-mile run. A runner has developed pain in his Achilles tendon after going on a ten-mile run through a hilly area. He has noticed mild pain in the Achilles tendon in the weeks leading up to this run. What type of injury has this runner most likely sustained? A, traumatic, B, acute, C, repetitive overuse, or D, sprain?
Uh, he sprained.
Nope.
Uh, repetitive overuse?
Yes, here's your clue. He has noticed the mild pain in the weeks leading up to this run.
So if this was like the first week, it would have been.
If he's been feeling it for weeks and weeks, it's repetitive. It's, it's chronic, but chronic's not an option here. So it's repetitive. He keeps doing it over and over again. If it's a sprain, it would be more directed and that would be an acute. Um, issue, that it would be an acute injury. Both acute and sprain are listed there. You can cross those off because sprains are acute. Is it traumatic? No, because it didn't happen suddenly. It's not terrible. It didn't. It's been building and building. So this is chronic or in this case repetitive overuse. Alright, here's an ethics one. What is the function of the scope of practice within a profession? A, it aids in clinical decision-making? B, it outlines the best practices for the clinician? C, it guides ethical decision-making, or D, it defines what can and cannot be performed by the clinician?
D.
D is absolutely correct.
But I guess, wouldn't it, couldn't it be B too?
I mean, yeah, it can, but that's a way more gray area because. Best practices are going to differ by your modality. Um, by your belief systems and, and what things work best in particular things. Um, so what is a best practice for me? Is not going to be the best practice that someone who only does craniosacral therapy would decide to do. Um, although we may be working on the same type of pathology. So in this case, it would tell, tell me and tell the other clinician in the state of Michigan, we can't use ultrasound. Um, so that's that. But we could still do whatever we believe to be the best practices. Um, within our scope of practice. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Alright, fill in the blank. A blank is a small, hyper-irritable area within a muscle that is painful when compressed. Is it A, a trigger point, B, a tendon point, C, a pressure point, or D, a fusion point?
Trigger point.
A trigger point. It would have been more confusing if they had put a tender point in there. I think. Here's a client assessment one for you. Fill in the blank. In order to properly utilize the data gathered during the assessment, the massage therapist must. A, input the objective data into a national database to compare standardized norms? B, employ clinical reasoning to develop an appropriate care plan with quantifiable goals? C, follow a standardized routine of relaxation massage? Or D, confer with a physician to determine if there are any areas of contraindication for massage?
Uh, B?
B is correct. Yes. So we can throw out A and C because we're not doing anything standardized, right? Like, these are individual people. Um, and then you're not gonna call a doctor on call. To try to help you figure out what you should already know is a contraindication to massage. But you do need to have clinical reasoning skills and you need to be able to develop a care plan for your client. And you need to be able to have goals that they wanna reach that you feel are attainable um to reach as a massage therapist. Oh, this one looks interesting. Guidelines for professional practice. Small business owners are responsible for bookkeeping. You may choose to do this work yourself or hire someone to take care of your accounts. Either way, a massage therapist who goes into business for themselves should have at least a basic understanding of how to organize their finances. Which of the following would be recorded in the accounts receivable category? A, a clinic made a total of five thousand dollars in one week? B, the clinic owes a wholesale supplier two thousand dollars for a linen order? C, a client still owes the clinic a hundred and twenty dollars for treatment? Or D, after calculating taxes, a clinic made three thousand dollars in one week?
The client still owes the clinic.
Correct. Accounts receivable, receivable is money that's owed to a business. Any money that the business owes. So um, like the clinic owes a wholesale supplier for two thousand for the linen order. What category would that be? Do you remember?
And the deducts.
It starts with accounts as well. Accounts receivable is people that owe you money. When you owe people money, it's accounts.
Uh, spend.
Payable. You have to pay them, so payable. Mm-hmm. The total amount of money made? It's total, so it's not net. What would a total amount of money made be called?
Something with a G.
It does. It's two words.
It's something with net, right?
It is gross income. When you, when you take, yep, all of your income is gross income. And then D, you've already calculated taxes. Alright, you ended up losing two thousand dollars. Now you've only made three thousand dollars in one week.
Deductible.
That would be your net income. That's what you have left. Your gross income is all of your income coming in and then you pay all of your stuff out. And then what you have left over, that's actual profit. That's your net income.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, what is the best definition of hydrotherapy? A, the use of water to apply extreme temperatures during massage, either to the client's body or to an intermediary object? B, the use of immersion baths as a therapeutic technique? C, the use of cold during a massage, or D, the use of heat during a massage?
I feel like A best describes it.
Correct. I would remove the word extreme because you can still use water. And not have it be an extreme temperature. Um, but yes. That is hydrotherapy. Okay. Here's another fill in the blank. Is, it is possible for a massage therapist to mechanically stimulate blank? By performing massage directly over the veins moving towards the heart? A, arterial flow, B, venus return, C, respiration, or D, proprioception?
Proprioception.
I was thinking about that answer hard because it's my favorite sense in the human body, but it is not it. It will help the body gain its sense of proprioception, knowing where your body is in space. But you don't mechanically stimulate it. It is B, venus return, returning that blood to the heart. Moving that blood, that cardiovascular system. Arterial flow would be away from the heart. Which is not a typical place for a massage therapist to work? A, a gym, B, a spa, C, emergency room, or immediate care? Um, nobody needs a massage in the middle of acute trauma. I find this, this next question interesting and it really depends on your region and your state laws, um, among other things. Alright, a parent approaches a massage therapist with concern over her child's complaints of growing pains in her lower limbs. What is an appropriate solution? A, with parental consent and supervision, a seventy-five-minute massage over the lower legs for pain relief? B, it is not appropriate to massage children for growing pains due to the risk of injury at the growth blades? C, with parental consent and supervision, a twenty-minute massage over the lower legs for pain relief? Or D, it is not appropriate to massage children due to hypersensitive nervous system activity?
With the consent, uh, you can do a twenty-minute massage.
Correct. That is, that is absolutely the best answer. Most massage sessions for kids range between like ten to forty minutes. According to AMTA, it's really closer to fifteen to thirty minutes. So it really depends on what the kid can handle. Um, and of course, what it is, because any particular area. Um, once you get so much inflammation um and circulation in the area from constantly working it. You're losing therapeutic value um after about fifteen minutes on one spot anyway. So I would probably at max do fifteen minutes per leg, which would honestly be about a thirty-minute massage for the legs themselves. Um, just throwing that out there as a guide. Alright, one more and then I shall release you to the wild. A massage therapist is performing an assessment with a new client. All of the following should be done except A, muscle tests, B, palpation? C, observation, or D, goal setting? I'm trying to trick you with this one.
Yeah. With a new client, um. It's either A or D.
Here's your clue in the question. You are currently performing, you are in the act of doing assessment. It's not over yet.
Also, goal setting.
Goal setting is, right, that's something you do after, after the assessment is done. You're gonna do muscle tests during the assessment and palpation and observation. And then after you've done all the assessments, then. You do the goal setting afterwards. Alright, how do you feel?
So good.
Good, good. Alright, I will be here next Wednesday again. You have my number. If you feel like doing it a different time, um, or something, feel free to reach out to me. We can do it at a different time. We can do an extra one, um, whatever you feel like doing. I'm locked into doing Wednesdays for everybody now because it's publicized. Um, but if you, if you feel like, you know what, I wanna do this for thirty minutes or something, I will absolutely help you out if you wanna do that.
Okay, uh, what days are you available today?
My schedule is wild, so just text to me. Um, there's usually a portion of every day that I'm available. Um, what time it is during that day just depends on what I already have booked up, to be honest with you. So just shoot me a text and we'll see, unless you wanna pre-schedule something, um, but I'm, I'm pretty flexible.
Okay. Okay, so.
Yep, yeah, whatever works for you. I want to work when you're in the mood to do it. Does that make sense? Like, if two days from now, you're like, okay, I'm in the mood to talk about kina, kinesiology for twenty minutes. Let's just knock out some kinesiology and then go about our day. And that way, you've got it when you wanted to do it and it wasn't something you're like, oh, do I really have to show up and do this? I want you to do it when you're excited about it.
Okay, um, so. Do you think, I'm trying not to like over-study.